Good evening. The regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council for December the 11th, 2018, is now in session. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, that will live eternally.
In just a minute or two, I will ask you to join me in a moment of silence. But first, I would like to, I would ask for all of you to remember the two families in your thoughts and prayers this evening. First, the family of Nancy Rascoe, Peter's mother, who died this past Thanksgiving day. Hundreds of people, many from the Outer Banks, who attended her funeral service, gave poignant testimony to her and the remarkable life she had lived. I would also like you to ask you to remember the Glenn Weeder family. Glenn was devoted to his family and had a special place in his heart for his first granddaughter, and was quick to share his love for all of them. As president of the Chicago Property Owners Association, as chairman of our planning board, and as a friend of so many, Glenn was involved in our community, his community, very early on. There's no way to adequately measure the loss of Glenn Weeder. He touched our lives and our town in a way and at a time that goes beyond measure. Please join me in a moment's tribute to these two very special people and their families. Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion from Mr. Connors. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Nation, second. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Agenda's been approved, thank you. I need a motion, counsel, to approve the consent agenda, tab one in your book.
I'd like to make an adjustment to that. Council meeting schedule is under the consent agenda, and there's some issues with it. And I'd like to put that under new business if we could.
Yeah, I would be glad to do that, Gary. So we move item, I guess it is four, from the paragraph E up here, down to the old business, I'm sorry, new business, item five B, we'll make it five C. Everyone okay with that? Yes. Do I call on you, David? For the video of the 2018 Motorcycle Toy Run and presentation to Chief, Police Chief Cole?
Mayor, council, my name's Terry Gray. I'm the director of the Dare County Motorcycle Toy Run. We're here tonight to make a presentation to your police chief. We want to thank them for helping us. I'll give you a little history on the toy run. It was founded in 2016. We're a 501-3C, and we've been in operation for three years. Our first year, we raised $14,000. We bought Christmas for 400 underprivileged kids in Dare County. All this money stays in Dare County. Our second year, we raised $25,000. We bought Christmas for 573 kids in Dare County. Proud to say this year that we've raised just under $32,000. We've got a pretty good track record. We've made some changes this year. We've changed our name from the Dare County Motorcycle Toy Run to the Dare County Motorsports Charity Group. And we did that so that we could branch out a little bit. We partnered with the First Flight Society, and we also received the Governor's Award for Excellence this year, for volunteerism. We're very proud of that. Excuse me. We had the distinct honor of having a local musician, Mr. Johnny Waters, do our theme song for us this year. You'll see that when we play the video. We visited the Acoch Brown Welcome Center, part of our run, and then we went to the Wright Brothers Monument. We celebrated 1903, which, there were three important things that happened in 1903. Of course, the Wright Brothers' first flight, the introduction of Harley-Davidson motorcycles, and the introduction of Ford Motor Company. So that was our tribute this year. Without further ado, I'd like to go ahead and ask that we play the video. I think y'all will enjoy this. There's a lot of good footage of the area. We're pretty proud of our videos. We do one for each year. My preacher's son does that for us, Outer Banks drone. He does a fantastic job. We've, like I said, branched out a little bit this year. We've started three educational scholarships. We've started one for Manio in the mainland. We've started one for the Northern Beaches, and one for Hatteras Island. Hopefully, we'll be able to help some of the children with some of their expenses when they go to school. We're a law enforcement escorted ride, and in the route itself, we rely a lot on the police departments. Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to call up your police chief and make a presentation to him.
Yes, sir.
Chief, we sure appreciate you, and we appreciate you, fellows. They helped us get through this intersection, pretty tough situation. We have a plaque that is handmade by Shane that we present. We hope that you'll enjoy that as a little token of our appreciation. These guys make y'all look good. We appreciate what you all do for our community. Thank you, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'll follow up and indicate that we've got some exciting things planned for 2019. We've partnered with Michael Tillot, which is OBX SS, and we have an event coming this May, which is going to be phenomenal. It's going to be epic in this area. It's a custom rod and car show. And with your consent, I'd like to invite Michael up to say a few words and just give us a little recap of what he's got planned.
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you, sir. Hello, my name is Michael Tillot from Manio, North Carolina. And like Terry was saying, we're doing an OBX Rod and Custom Festival the first weekend in May, 2019. We're bringing cars from all over the country and Canada to support the charities that we're working for, which is one of them is the Toy Run with Terry, and the other one is the Children Youth Partnership. All proceeds are going to be split between those two charities after expenses. So it's going to be something that this county's never seen before with the type of cars. The best way I can describe it is going to be hot wheels come to life. And we're going to have cruise-ins at different places all throughout the county. Manio, Naxet, Killover Hills, Kitty Hawk, this area. We've already booked almost four hotels full already, and we start registration for the cars in January. So we're getting an overwhelming response. We're on Facebook, OBX Rod and Custom Festival, if y'all want to get on the Facebook link and kind of follow it and see what's going on. But I just appreciate your time, but just to give you a little brief synopsis of what we've got going on for next year to help these two fine charities out. And it's a pleasure working with this guy right here.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Mayor, thank you for letting us come in. We appreciate y'all. Thank you for your loan of your police department. They did great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. You didn't mention your involvement with the Special Olympics, but I think you should also mention that.
Yeah, and we do, we're involved with the Special Olympics. We make a charity run for that. And we also have other charities. We just recently did a charity ride to a local restaurant and made a donation to the VFW Post. Everybody on my board is a volunteer. Nobody gets paid a dime, and we work strictly for charity work. So we touch a lot of people. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We didn't vote on the consent agenda.
I'm sorry. Let's go back and relive that just a minute.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Motion to the major, approve the consent agenda with the amendment of moving the council meeting schedule down to new business.
What was the amendment?
The amendment was to move the council meeting schedule for 2019 down to the new business. All in, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed to that? That motion is made in carry of shield, I'm sorry. That's what you mentioned. Thank you. This time, I'll call on our town planner, Debbie Town Manager, Wes Haskett. Good evening, Wes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Good evening, everybody. I have a brief report for y'all tonight for the month of November. There's 13 zoning permits. They were issued, 34 building permits issued. Those consisted of two new single-family dwellings, four additions, two remodels, two repairs, seven accessories, and 17 others. The total amount of fees collected in November was $11,534.39, and there are currently 24 single-family dwellings under construction in the town. With respect to code enforcement, four warning citations were mailed to property owners for three right-of-way obstructions and one canal obstruction. With respect to the town code update, the second public forum for the town code update project will be held on January 31st, here in the Pitt Center, from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM. The purpose of the forum will be for the consultant, code right planners, to receive questions, comments, and concerns in finalizing the draft document. The draft document will be available for viewing on the town's website in the near future. Lastly, with respect to the planning board, they will be meeting next Monday, December 17th, at 5:30 PM. The board will consider ZTA-1809 text amendment applications submitted by the town of Southern Shores to amend the town code by amending Section 36-132, Regulation of Structures and Uses Nonconforming, which is an amendment to the ZTA-1807 that was adopted by council earlier this year. And lastly, the board will also discuss potential regulations to address large, single-family dwellings. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
This time, I'll call on David Cole, our police chief. Good evening, David.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. November 2018, police report. As you can see, we had 1,099 calls for service for November. Quick breakdown as far as incidents, there were two. As you can see, we had two DOAs. One of those was unfortunately another drug overdose death. We had one criminal arrest. We had three motor vehicle accidents. Officers conducted 35 traffic stops. Out of that 35, they handed out 13 written citations and another 11 warning citations. And we had two parking code violations. And that's all I had. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, chief. Ed Limbacher, our fire chief. Evening, Ed.
Evening, everybody. So for the month of November, fire department responded to 42 calls. Three were actual building fires. 20 EMS calls. One each of the motor vehicle accidents, one liquid fuel spill, one bomb scare, two service calls, three assist government agencies, three public service, one authorized burning, one standby, and five alarms total. For a total, again, of 42. And that's a little higher than last year, which was 36, so. Any questions on that? Just a couple of things I did want to bring up. Under the new contract, we're a little closer with the budget and how we work it, so I just did want to start briefing you on some different things. Just to give you a briefing on the kind of money that's spent, because you guys really don't know any of this, because it's always been a kind of a separate entity, where we're a lot closer now. Last month, we had the unfortunate, a couple of problems with one of our engines, where it went to CWMS, which is in Rockmount, North Carolina. So that takes two of our guys eight hours back to get it there and get back. While it was out there, it needed almost $12,000 worth of work, $11,977. So the truck's 10 years old. You can see what starts happening. That's why we need to keep on a replacement schedule we have. So just trying to bring you into the loop. Unfortunately, while that was out, we had another issue with another one of our vehicles, 121, the brakes failed on it. So it sat in the garage for almost two weeks till CWMS could come out here and fix it. That was another $840. So that's almost, what, $13,000 in a month? This year, we allowed for $25,000, which I upped from last year, from $5,000, from $20,000 to $25,000. You can see what happens as the trucks get older, it starts really banging you with the maintenance. So just preparing you for when I come in here and I say, okay, we're going to replace this truck, you understand, I'm just starting to build and show you why I'm doing what I'm doing. So you could see also why would, people say, why do you have four trucks? Well, we only had two. So that can happen, and it's happened more than once since I've been chief. So I'm just trying to explain to you how we're moving along. The other thing, some, anybody have any questions on any of that? That doesn't happen every month, of course, thank God, but it does happen. So the other thing was, the building, I wanted to give you a couple of quick updates. We're about 90% moved out of the current building, other than the garage bays themselves. We're into, some of it's in storage, a lot of it is over here, the temporary office that Mike Stone was gracious enough to let us use for free. We are moving the trucks and the bay and all the gear to temporary office, or the temporary facility in back of the school, January 5th. So that weekend, that Saturday, we'll move it all over there, and the building will be completely empty. January 7th, we turn it over to ARHS, and they'll begin, I would hope shortly after that, maybe a couple days a week, I don't know. Right now, we currently have the contracts for them. We're reviewing them with the board. Once we get a chance to go over them this week, we got them yesterday. Once we get a chance to go over them this week, we'll hopefully get them back to them early next week, and it should be all good to go. Financing's all in play. Hopefully, by the first week of January, it'll be all lined up and signed, and we'll be ready to go. So everything's going as smooth as it can go for now. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, chief. I just want to make one quick comment. I was advised by one of your helpers that you have been able to work with the Carrying Hands group from Duck Woods, from Duck Church, to provide them with a lot of materials that could be used in a renovation of a home of somebody's lost their home or had damage to the home. They'll have things like toilets and sinks and so forth that would be reusable.
Well, lucky that myself and the police chief are good friends, so I just, we just happened to be talking about different things in the building, and he said, hey, I'd like to really look in there and see if we could make use of that stuff, because it's going in a box anyway, nobody really wants it. And we did. We stripped out, myself, Chief Cole, Shelby Hines, and Pat Reagan stripped out the kitchen, loaded the kitchen up with all the old cabinets and things like that, and they're going to take some handbars and things, because as you know, that's all built into the new price. The contractor's not going to be like, hey, we got this free bar. They're going to be like, ah. They're just going to put their stuff in to be done. So we were able to repurpose it, which will be good, so it'll help somebody in the end. So it was kind of like a give and take, but it was good on both sides.
Yeah, a very positive way to make those things be sort of used somewhere else.
I did try and sell some of that stuff. You know, I put it on GovDeals and different websites the kids put on, but nobody seems to want any of it, so unfortunately, I couldn't make back any money, so.
Anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Town manager report, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Wanted to start out by telling you that the junior portrayal improvement project completion date, recall, is December 21. And this project is very weather-dependent because of the type of application for base and a slurry base and paving on top of a concrete slurry base. Right now, it's scheduled for the existing base to be removed on the 14th of this week, and then the paving to occur with the slurry on the 15th. All that's weather-dependent right now, but so far, that's the plan. Also, Yopon, as you can tell, if you've seen that, is continuing with the process there of the bulkhead-ing and the permitted land rebuilding going out into the canal is what's occurring right now. So that's on schedule, and that's, of course, a spring completion date for your Yopon Improvement Project. The facilities assessment project that you council did fund for this year is nearing completion. As soon as I get the report from the architects, I'll be forwarding that to each of you. The plan, I think, is for us to hopefully get one of the architects to come before you in February to present some of the details of the findings of that plan, and you can engage in a discussion with them at that time as well. The beach conditions assessment project that you funded for this year is nearing completion as well, and as soon as I get that, I'll be forwarding it to you. The consultant is engaged to come in February to present to you as well the findings of the beach assessment that have occurred during this year. So hopefully, we'll have those on the same day as you make other planning initiatives. The Dominion Resources contacted me just today that they are seeking right-of-way on other streets in town to hopefully put some lines underground. These areas would be Tall Pine, Yopon Trail, and Sassafras Lane area. It takes a right-of-way conveyance by the council, just like the last time that you did that. So they will be coming at your January meeting, whatever day that will be, to brief you on their request at that time, and I'll be forwarding, of course, that information with your meeting packet for January. I did want to update the council on two items dealing with solid waste, and go ahead and notify you that we are running very high on tonnage on solid waste disposal at the landfill. And this is not a unique thing to Southern Shores. Apparently, all the other towns have experienced high tonnage during the summer of this year. And we trying to identify exactly where a lot of it is coming from, but apparently, it's just across the board. So we're going to watch that very carefully in our budget. Recall, we do pay our solid waste pickup carrier a fee to pick up, and of course, we have to pay our mall solid waste authority to tip that waste in Dare County, at the Dare County landfill. So that's what's running high, the actual tonnage for solid waste. To maintain the same schedule for December, the holiday schedule, which will be December 24th, Dare County this year is closing the landfill that day. So in order to maintain the same schedule, we're having to dispose our solid waste in the Currituck landfill. That's convenient for location, however, it's costing us $10 more a ton to do that, just to keep it on December 24th. But that is the plan at this time, to go ahead and absorb that and keep the same schedule so that we can have our normal pickups during the month of December. And finally, I wanted to just remind you, I think I had emailed you before, but, last meeting, I told you about this, that Rees Across America program, there'll be volunteers from the Outer Banks Women's Club, will be assisting our public works sometimes this week, hopefully by the end of Friday, with placement of Rees on the veterans' graves that are located in the Southern Shores Cemetery. There is a count of 40 that have been made, identified there. I think there's probably a few more that have to take some research to see if they are veterans, but we counted at least 40 right now. So hopefully, by the weekend, you'll see those special Rees that the national program, Rees Across America, provides, and we'll place those out by the veterans' graves. And that's the operational report for this month, and I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, anybody has.
Anyone have any questions for Peter? Thank you, appreciate it. Town attorney?
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ben. This time, I'll open general public comment. Ann Scherzma? Good evening, Ann.
Good evening, Tom, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Ann Scherzma, 69 Hickory Trail. I'd like to say, first of all, that I'm adamantly opposed to changing the scheduling so that the mayor has sole authority to cancel a meeting when there's quote-unquote "a lack of agenda items." I think that's an autocratic move that we don't need in the town. And I also am opposed to restricting the number of budget sessions, public budget sessions, from two to one, as the new schedule indicates. Otherwise, I'd like to speak to the draft ZTA, Large House. Generally speaking, I find it cumbersome, regressive, not reasonably designed to achieve what I thought was the objective, which is to preserve low density and limit occupancy on the oceanfront. And I also find it discriminatory in many ways. In particular, I'd like to say I think it's punitive to require people to hide their trashcans and receptacles behind fenced areas, also rather highfalutin to do so. And I'm opposed to the landscaping buffers that have been drafted in there. Generally speaking, I think you have problems with the draft in the parking and in the selection of the 4,000 square feet as an arbitrary cutoff for the map. of the 4,000 square feet as an arbitrary cutoff for the size of the houses. And Mr. Nason, I am going to address your property at 64 Ocean Boulevard, which is a non-conforming lot, fifty-foot-wide lot, and you've designed a house there of 3,600 square feet, according to the permit file. There's not been a camera permit issued on that house quite yet, to my knowledge, but it does appear to me, because you have an interest in that lot, that you shouldn't be participating in the discussion tonight, because this ZTA noticeably omits anything concerning with non-conforming lots, and there clearly has to be something addressed in this new district about what do you do with lots that are not 100 feet wide. Clearly, a 3,600-square-foot house on a 50-foot-wide lot is going to bring a higher density of population than one of this comparable size on a 100-foot-wide lot. That needs to be addressed in this ZTA if it's going to go forward. The parking needs to be addressed much more carefully than it is, much more detailed. You need to look at the spaces, not the size of the spaces, and right now, what we have in effect under the town code permits Saga to build a house with seventeen parking spaces, and that's because the town council hasn't gone back and looked at the parking requirements and noticed that they're tied into septic use capacity, and there was a time when we had a maximum septic use capacity of fourteen, so please take a look at the parking. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ann. Paula Sherlock? Evening, Paula.
Thank you. My name is Paula Sherlock, and my husband and I seem to live in the hotspot here in town. We own 66 Ocean Boulevard, and I've addressed the council before, when Saga was planning to build a wedding house next door to us. I think I've been impacted more about some of these issues than anybody else in the community, because of the construction next door. We've lost our privacy. I've lived next door to a construction site for two years, I've stared at a dumpster, my view has been impacted. But I want to emphasize that throughout this entire process, we have always maintained a cordial relationship with our new neighbors, and I was shocked to come back to this community after being home for a while, to learn that their house had been vandalized. I've lived in this community part of the year for about thirty years, I've never felt unsafe, but I do feel unsafe now, the fact that someone has been skulking around in our community and spray painting graffiti on houses is just really shocking to me. I think it's getting too, I'm not really talking to the council, maybe, I think it's getting way too personal with these owners. They are not Saga, don't mix them up with Saga. I also came back to a rumor and a published fact that the house next door to me on 64 had ten bedrooms, not seven bedrooms, and I was really upset. I contacted the builder, he invited me to walk over to the house, which I did this morning, so there are only seven bedrooms at 64 Ocean Boulevard. So again, maybe this isn't so much for the council, I think you're in a very tough spot. I've researched this issue a fair amount and understand what you're dealing with, the state regulations, but I really want to implore this community to try to follow the rules and stick to the facts and not make it personal with the owners of these houses. Thanks.
Thank you. Matt Neal?
Good evening, Matt. Matt Neal, 163 Wax Myrtle Trail, also president of Outer Banks Home Builders Association. If you would forgive, permit me, I want to give you a couple of documents to review. I'll give a brief presentation, you've got a lot of information to jam.
Mr. Neal, before you start, I'd like to ask, will this get entered into the formal record, David?
It certainly can be.
Yes, it will. Okay.
It should be, I think. What you have before you is a site plan that we've drafted in a hurry over the last few days, after we had the text of the zoning overlay amendment, and what it shows is an eleven-bedroom house plan, approximately 5,600 square feet, that can be permitted under the overlay. So the question that we're asking is, what is the intent of the overlay? And some of the concerns we have with the overlay are the direction of development that's going to be forced by this overlay. You have large parking lots in front, you're narrowing the houses, you're stretching the houses out and width, and not necessarily addressing the core of the issue. I have a little cheat sheet in my folder over there, but I'm not going to be able to fit every item in that in the next three minutes, so I would like to pivot to suggest that you direct the planning board to consider another option, and that's the second sheet that I gave you, and that you regulate the problem the town is facing by use. Now, this is similar as having a hair salon in a residential district. You create zoning definitions that define a high occupancy dwelling, you create a second definition that defines a high occupancy dwelling rental, and you prohibit that use within an RS1 district. Now, you still permit the high occupancy dwelling, but it has to go through a conditional use procedure. This tracks that permit from the get-go, goes before the planning board, goes before the town council, staff notices it, they can attach that conditional use permit to the deed at the courthouse. If use changes, you can pull the permit. It has an enforcement mechanism, it addresses the purpose of what we're trying to discuss over the next several months, and it really cuts to the core of the issue without imposing what I consider owner's building restrictions on the option, the property rights of individual owners. Tried to cram a lot into three minutes, happy to answer questions, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt. Mark Martin?
Good evening, Mark. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, town council. I'm Mark Martin, I'm at 191 Wax Myrtle Trail. Matt and I have discussed some of the proposals there over the last few weeks after the ZTA came out. I think one of the first things that we've tended to do over the twenty, almost twenty-two years I've been here, is when there's an issue, we go right after, how do we restrict the house and the size of the house and what we're doing on the lot? And I think this is a unique opportunity for us, because for the first time, we're really looking at, you know, what Matt just kind of laid out here a few minutes ago, the use. We just built a five-bedroom, 4,400-square-foot house on the oceanfront, 166 Ocean Boulevard. The old house we tore down there was a one-story on-piling's house that was built in 1982 that would not meet what you're proposing on the ZTA. It was, it had a high cathedral ceiling in it, so the height wouldn't match, the side yard setbacks wouldn't match, so I think anything, if we're going to look at increasing all these setbacks and do this stuff, we're going to have a town that's full of nonconformities, and I don't think any of us wants that. So we've been kicking around this idea of the use, so it seems like seven bedrooms kind of worked for Southern Shores for a long time, and we didn't have a whole lot of issues with this. So we thought about, if you took that seven-bedroom, that occupancy number, and said, all right, that's a larger home, and we've got to deal with the impacts of those homes of that size. We don't want to touch anything below that, because, I mean, we've all had rental properties here that enabled us to be able to move here, so we think there's a fine line there. The problem becomes, and this goes back to the bedroom issues, is why did the General Assembly change it? Well, they changed it because the towns and municipalities had the option of being able to regulate by bedrooms, and then certain towns would take it to an extreme and say, all right, we don't want any five-bedroom houses. Next guy comes in, we don't want any four-bedroom houses, and the next thing you know, it's just so overblown that the General Assembly decided, enough, we're not going to do that. And I'm afraid if we try to go down this road again, there's going to be more restrictions. So anyway, I mean, that's just something that's kind of out there, but I think this use issue, or way to regulate it, has a lot of track, could have a lot of traction, and I think that'll solve a lot of our problems. So, like I said, the house that we built, five-bedroom, 4,400 square feet, you could throw another couple bedrooms in there. When we first started it, people said, oh my God, how many bedrooms you got in that thing? I said, well, I've got five bedrooms in it. Where are they from? Are they going to rent it out? No. Lives right down the street, just moving across the street, up the road here, having a, oh, wow, what a beautiful house you built there. And that's the kind of stuff we were looking for in town, so let's address the impacts, hopefully look at this use pretty hard, and see if we can come up with a way to remedy the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Jerry Sullivan? Good evening, Jerry.
Jerry Sullivan, 31 10th Avenue, Mayor Bennett, council. I want to ask this council to reconsider the schedule you've put together for the year. Only twelve meetings have been scheduled that can be canceled by the mayor, and only one budget session. One of the important objectives I see for this council is communicating with the public and keeping them informed as to what's going on in the town, and also giving them an opportunity to let you know what we think. By reducing the number of council meetings, you're reducing the chance to interact. Secondly, we're constantly being challenged by the developers. We not only canceled the October meeting and delayed the November meeting, where we might have had an opportunity to respond to the current Saga construction, and now I understand they've acquired the second property, so I think we should be pushing to get together and discuss these issues more, not less. So I ask this council to consider pulling the second month, putting the second monthly meeting back on the schedule with the option to cancel if there are no agenda items, and please don't cancel any more first Tuesday meetings next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. This time, I'll close the public comment session. Council, item five, old business.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is possible, I'd ask a moment to speak for a second?
Sure, Chris, absolutely.
I just have a quick statement to read, and I think it might address Ms. Scherzma's comments earlier, too. When I first took office three years ago, I asked the town attorney if my architectural work in Southern Shores precluded me from voting on the large home issue for any legal or ethical reasons. At that time, Mr. Gallup did not feel it was in conflict, and the subsequent unanimous vote by the town council, they confirmed my eligibility. I would once again ask Mr. Gallup if he felt I should recuse myself from any further votes on this matter.
I spoke on Mr. Nason before, and the issue on this is under 168-381D, and generally, the members of the board here, the audience may not know this, people who are listening may not know this, but they have a duty to vote. The way the statute under 168-75 reads is that you shall vote unless you fall into certain categories of conflict, and those conflicts are defined by the General Assembly, and under 168-75, the first two are consideration of your own financial interest and of your own official conduct. Clearly, at this point, neither of those apply to Mr. Nason, but the next step is to go to the specific zoning regulations, and where for legislative zoning matters, which is text and map amendments, the standard is that the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on a member. If that standard's not met, then the member shall vote. In this case, the only issue that I'm aware of is that Mr. Nason does work for Saga Construction outside of the consideration of any of the oceanfront and Southern Shores. Clearly, that's not a direct or substantial financial interest. It's identifiable, but it's not necessarily readily identifiable. So in my opinion, I don't believe that that is enough to be a conflict, however, I believe you were going to make a motion to...
Yeah, regardless, I am very aware within the community, there's a perception of a conflict of interest, and that concerns me. I don't want that perception out there, and despite the fact that, in fact, on these Saga houses, I actually turned down the vote, so I don't feel like those houses were in the best interest of the town, they weren't in my best interests, hence turning them down. So essentially, the condition that we, when I entered office, is unchanged before, but with that said, it's now clear to me that the continued discussions have become quite a distraction for the town. As such, I would urge the council, all of the council, to recuse me on further voting in this matter. It is not worth risking the safety of my home, my family, for an issue that I feel will ultimately be resolved at a state level.
You want to make a motion?
I would like to make that motion.
Do I have a second to Mr. Nason's motion?
I'll second your motion, David. Any comment? Can we do that, Ben?
You don't have to ever listen to my analysis. I mean, my analysis is my opinion, and you are...
I understand, but that's law.
You're the body that gets to decide.
But do we have the legal authority to excuse a council member from voting on something that is state law?
If, I mean, I could be wrong, that it's not a readily identifiable, direct, substantial financial interest. My opinion is, so what would happen is, if you vote yes, you are finding that it is a readily identifiable, direct, substantial financial interest, and hopefully, we don't get a challenge for that. And if you vote no, then you're finding that it isn't a direct, substantial, readily identifiable challenge, and hopefully, we don't get a challenge for that. The answer is that I can't do anything but give you what my opinion is on it.
Okay, and my other question to you is, would that include anything in the future? If we excuse him on this one, are we excluding him from voting on any issue that comes forth as far as large houses?
No, as far as I see it, you're excluding him from discussion of this agenda item tonight, and the facts can change, the agenda items can change, lots of things can change, and I think you deal with it on a per-agenda-item basis.
And I, on a personal level, I'd ask council to vote to approve the recusal, and the reason is, this is tearing our town apart. I do not think that some of this vitriol that's going around, and Ms. Sherlock mentioned some of it, is in the best interest of our town, and so long as that animus is focused on me, it will continue. And so I would ask that you please recuse me on this. I do not want my children to feel unsafe in this community anymore.
You know, you're hitting a nail on the head on what's going, is a direct result of a lot of the social media talk. When that stuff goes on and puts you in that kind of position, where you feel like you do not want to do the job that you were elected to, I think that's speaking volumes on what Ms. Sherlock addressed, the attitude within the community. This has nothing to do with you, I mean, except that it's directed at you, and it's putting you in this position, but...
Regardless, I'd ask you to consider voting to recuse me.
And I got a comment.
Go ahead.
My concern, if we do recuse you, and we vote on a ZTA tonight, and suppose it's a two-to-two vote, we just kill that ZTA altogether.
I can't, I can't help that, I can only charge...
And that hurts the town, because we're trying to come up with ways to limit big houses, not saying that we're going to vote one way or the other, but the two-to-two is going to present a problem, and my concern is going forward, if you don't recuse yourself from this point forward, this issue's going to come up every agenda.
I'd be comfortable, on the large homes, I'd be comfortable conveying it forward, I don't have a problem with that.
Why is this one?
Why is this one? Because this has clearly become a focus on my work with Saga and other communities has been identified as a problem, it's a perceived conflict of interest, and really, it's, you know, it's just... And really, it's, you know, it's just not necessary to wind folks up this much. I think you're right in that it could lead to a tie, but I also think it also could lead to maybe the other council members coming to a common decision. So, maybe the town gets in a better place because the remaining four council members have to bridge their differences. And you don't see a three-two, it ends up being a four-nothing. So, I'll leave it at that.
Do you have direct evidence that your family is in jeopardy? Are there safety issues?
We've had, my wife's felt unsafe, yes.
I'm sorry?
My wife has felt unsafe, yes.
Wait, is there a reason for it?
I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but yes, there's a reason for it.
I can't speak for Chris, but I can't help but drawing phallic symbols on people's homes isn't a part of this.
Can we call for a vote?
A motion on the floor, counsel, to recuse Mr. Nason from voting on this issue tonight, the ZTA, large homes, which we haven't even presented a motion to consider yet, but...
Do I vote, Ben?
May Mr. Nason vote.
It's a really complicated ques... You could get into a really strange domino effect where you had to recuse yourself from accusing yourself to recuse yourself to recuse yourself. And we had to deal with this prior in the year when we had a recusal. And the analysis that we came up with at the time in correspondence with the school of government and trying to figure it out is that you do vote on your own recusal motion. Otherwise, you're still not recused, so you're still a yes vote. So, it's...
So...
There's just no way to deal with it otherwise.
So, legally speaking, does the council have the authority? The council does not have authority to override state law.
The council has the authority to vote to excuse.
To vote, but it does not override state law, am I correct?
Yes, you're correct in that...
And state law says that council members shall vote on any agenda items?
If they're present, yes.
And if they don't, then it's an affirmative vote.
Actually, in a zoning, they changed the statute last year, in a zoning vote, it's a negative vote.
Ah, okay.
Again, thank the General Assembly for trying to confuse everyone.
And my point, I guess...
What it is is...
I guess when, I guess what I'm trying to say is, when you take public office, you represent community, you're going to have to deal with community, and it becomes an issue at times when you vote, how you vote. I mean, hey, I'm the one sitting up here that's been on the hot seat before. And, you know, that, that's part of being a member of this council. When you come on the council, you are going to feel that, you're going to see that. And, you know, I don't think, I'm sorry, I just don't think stepping aside on something that you feel a perception of is correct or shouldn't be done.
I don't think Chris feels the perception. I think he sees the perception.
Well, he stated that, I didn't.
He sees the perception in the people in the town that he's, that's a problem.
I understand. Let's just call for a vote.
So, we have a motion and a second, counsel. All in favor of recusing Mr. Nason from participating in this discussion tonight? If you can get my saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay? So, the nays carry it, and you're not recused. Sorry.
Sorry, Steve.
At this time...
I tried.
At this time, I'll call on our town planner to give us an overview of the consideration of the council-directed draft amendment, ZTA, large homes. Are you going to be involved in this one?
I can be.
Okay. Yes, Wes, I'm calling.
Or were you expecting me to talk about it?
Yes, sir.
All right, I can do that.
Well, simply put, Mr. Mayor, it's an attempt to put on paper the motion that Mr. Connors made last week.
Last month.
For last month. Everything's kind of blending together to me these days. It's getting close to Christmas. The, first thing, let me explain a little bit about map amendments, zoning amendment, text amendments, and overlay districts, and how, what they are and how they apply. This is a text amendment. It is a change to the text of the ordinance, the town code, okay? You adopt, in the town code, you break down different, a schedule of districts, and they're all different districts. There's a governmental district, an RS1 district, an R district, an R1 district, various districts. And each one, they have different uses that are available and different dimensional requirements for different things. And then you take and you have a map amendment, and you decide where those districts apply on the ground within the town. This is not a map amendment, this is a text amendment, and that was what was requested by the motion. The motion did outline a geographic area that a map amendment can easily be prepared to go along with this when the time comes. But you adopt the regulations first, because otherwise, you adopt a map amendment that doesn't have any regulations in the district. So, you adopt the regulations, and then you adopt a zoning district map to put thing, put property in that zoning district that you've created. Most zoning districts are independent. There's, most of the oceanfront is RS1, and somewhere around the fire department, there's a R1 or an R8 or something, and there's an R8 down where the Pelican's Watch is. And then over here, there's commercial, and they're all separate. They have their own independent uses and dimensional requirements and things that occur within them. What an overlay district is, is it kind of says, I don't care what's underneath me, I'm going to add some additional requirements. So, what this is asking to do is not change any existing zoning districts, but for an area that is ultimately defined, and as Mr. Connors defined in his motion, that could ultimately be what the area is. For that area, then whatever zoning districts are there, they don't change, but this sits on top of them and adds additional requirements. So, most of the requirements for single-family homes that Mr. Connors' motion tracked, the height setback, all sorts of things that are listed in the dimensional requirements for the zoning districts that are underneath the area that he geographically described, weren't any different from what's there. So, you don't change them. They stay in the districts that they're in. But this applies the additional restrictions that you wanted in this district. And what he wanted was specific restrictions in this district, some that apply to all properties, some that apply just to properties above 4,000, between 4,000 and 6,000 square feet. So, that's what this attempts to do, is attempts, if you adopt a geographic overlay district, this will apply these regulations. And one mistake made by the person who typed it, me. I consistently say that stuff like, the use is permitted when the RS1 district, the conditional uses will be those conditional uses in the RS1 district, and then the dimensional requirements will be the ones in the RS1 district. I was thinking we were pretty much dealing just with the RS1 district when I wrote that. That should probably change to the underlying district because it is an overlay. But in any event, for single-family homes, all of the underlying districts over there have basically the same height and dimensional requirements, and that's pretty much what we're dealing with. Besides the additional requirements that Mr. Connors listed to go against all of them, related to refuse, receptacles, and landscaping, and buffer requirements, and parking requirements. But that's essentially what this is. It's just a putting on paper what Mr. Connors' motion was from last month. The only liberty that I took as the drafter and attorney was with regard to the recycling or receptacles. I understand some people are unhappy that there's an area that you have to put them in, but there really isn't a zoning, I mean, there was already a provision about how to deal with them. So, the only way to deal with them from a zoning perspective is to require somebody to have a place to put them. So, that's what I put in there. You can take it out, you can leave it. Really, I felt like this ordinance that was coming to you tonight is not going to the planning board yet. It's, the whole purpose was to put it in front of you so that you could have an opportunity to like it, not like it, change it, not change it, send it to the planning board, do whatever you wanted to, but that it's on paper so that you can see what it looks like. I think that was the purpose for having it come to the board before it went to the planning board. Otherwise, if you have any questions about it, feel free to ask, but it's, it is an attempt to just put on paper what Mr. Connors' motion was.
Mr. Mayor, the planner has a couple of images that he can show as well.
I think the planner also has some information about the average square footage of homes, both in the area that Mr. Connors described and just on the oceanfront as well.
Correct. Thank you, or thanks to the good folks at the Derry County Mapping Department, whose skills exceed mine. We were, they were able to generate a map, and the colored parcels you see on the screen are the parcels that are included or would be included in an overlay district that were mentioned in Mr. Connors' motion. All oceanfront properties, all properties east of NC-12 after the split, which includes avenues, Trout Run, Dolphin Run, et cetera, and all properties on the west side of NC-12 and Ocean Boulevard that are immediately adjacent to NC-12. Excuse me, so the different colors, it's a rainbow of colors, it's quite a few on there, shows the size of the structures broken down into different categories, where the average square footage for those structures is 2,512. That is for the overlay district that was mentioned in Mr. Connors' email. Sheila, if you can please go to the other image. For discussion purposes and just for information and consideration, we asked them to do another map that was just oceanfront properties, just to see what a difference would be in the average size of square, average square footage of the structures. This is all oceanfront properties, thereby being properties immediately adjacent to the Atlantic Ocean. And you can see the categories there, the average square footage for those structures is 3,265. So, you all can take this information as it is for future discussion and consideration. That covers, I think there's also, did we have the zoning map, too? Did we do that or no? Okay, well, Ben covered the zoning districts earlier, and the RS1 district, except for Pelican Watch, would be the areas subject to, or underneath an overlay district, should you all want to move forward with that. So, these are just a couple of things to keep in mind as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes, appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I think, Mr. Mumbus is going to make an awesome statement here off the cuff, but I think, I think we're kind of getting lost in the woods here with the big house. And we're spending a lot of time talking about the big house. And I think, in fact, our average home is not that huge along the oceanfront, even though we have a number of big homes there. Our concern back in the 90s and early 2000s was, how do we control what some people call density, other people call occupancy? How do we get there? And obviously, we're not going to get there unless we get our houses all down to 2,025 square feet. It's going to be impossible, and there's already homes that are much larger than that. So, I would, I would suggest that we, that we try to approach this from, not looking just at house size, but also what, how do we control, how many people stay in that house and how long they stay there, assuming it's going to be, there are going to be some rental properties involved. I would suggest that, I would make a motion that we refer draft ZTA, large homes, to the planning board, with instructions to also consider additional zoning requirements for regulating wastewater treatment capacity, regulating the use of residential properties for rental, regulating the number of water use fixtures in a residence using water conservation measures to control occupancy. And I would, I'd like to take that to the planning board if I can have a second to that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
Tom, in your reading of the motion, it sounds like you're including not just what's in here, really, anything, anything that can be...
I've given them, I've given them three, I've given them three other specific options to consider. In addition to that, in addition to this particular...
In addition to this?
Yeah, and I think, as a matter of fact, I think what, I think what Matt gave us ties into one of those options, regulating residential properties for rental. It's one of the things that he addresses in his paperwork.
Yeah, that was my question. Are you including Matt's proposal? I thought it was very...
I would include that in this package. I've asked him to go to the planning board anyway, so it's just a question of getting there, this way, instead of him going directly there. I think we talked about this in... Any other, any other question or discussion about that?
I'd like to make a quick comment or two, but we've, let Wes go first.
My question, just clarity moving forward for guidance for the planning board, is it occupants based on septic capacity, or is it flat-out occupants? Or is it either-or?
I think that's the challenge you guys are going to face because...
So, no, I'm saying...
I'm not going to answer that question.
In your, in your motion, I didn't, it sounded like it was based on septic capacity, but I just wanted to clarify that it could be occupants or septic capacity.
Septic capacity is one of the elements, if you can use that, if you can use that legally. I'm working on that, on a separate track.
Water conservation knows about what that was when you brought it in there.
Peter, would you address that for us? You have a...
Yes, the last point you made, Mr. Mayor, about water conservation, several large cities we're informed are using a point system in their approvals for fixtures within the house, such as number of sinks, number of commodes, et cetera, that do not necessarily correspond to number of bedrooms or type of rooms, but it's, it's used that way to try to, with the intent to control water usage. So, that's something that we could look at, I think the planning board could look at as an alternative as well. Some of the larger cities, some larger cities, I'm not necessarily saying in North Carolina, but we've gotten information that they're using that as a way to control occupancy slash density. So, that's just another idea to throw into the pot for the planning board.
I didn't mean to give you a backaway answer, Wes, I'm sorry. I just, I want, I want the planning board to feel like they're at liberty to discuss all the options and study all the options, and then come back to us with one they think is not bulletproof. We know that you're not going to come up with that, but something that we can, we can put in place and help us resolve this issue. The other alternative I'm looking at, hopefully, is that we get some help from the legislature to allow us to do, get some relief from this statute, this kind of, kind of onerous to us. And I'm not, I don't, whether it's possible or not, but I'm not going to give up on it. Motion on the floor, counsel, to send this package to the, to the planning board.
I've got a question, Tom, and I just want clarifications, all. And I want to make sure I understand the motion correctly. Your, your motion is including wastewater?
Yes, wastewater treatment.
The overlay district that Mr. Connors proposed before?
Yes.
And the high occupancy dwelling option that was presented here tonight?
Yes.
Now, are those...
And any other areas that the planning board think might be, including water usage and those things? Is that correct?
Yes, regulating, yes.
Okay.
Now, are these separate ways to tackle or all within the overlay district?
I think that's up to the planning board. Let's let them, if they want to mix and match, you know, just so long as it doesn't get too cumbersome.
Okay. I personally prefer to see it within an overlay district, but Mr. O'Neill and various others, Ms. Andy Ward, they have all been obviously putting some serious thought into this. And I think, when I made that motion last month, you almost heard me saying last week, when I made that motion last month, it was to get an idea out there, a concept, and people have taken that, and some people have run with it, some people have nothing good to say about it, but in my mind, the mission was completed because we're talking seriously about this. But I would like to mention that this is not going to happen in one or two meetings. This is going to take some very serious... This is going to take some very serious thought. And I'd really like to thank you, Matt, and Andy, and you, you guys in particular, but there are a number of others that have been very positively contributing to the discussion.
Mark Martin was one of those, as a matter of fact, just to follow up.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mark.
He didn't want us to say anything about it. So, I have a motion on the floor, I have a second to that motion. Do I have, do I have any, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Motion is made and carried to do what I just spelled out, and I've got it all written down here if you need it later. Under item six, council, we have to consider a Dare County Tourism Board appointment, tab, your tab three in your book. Council, Chris Nason, Councilman Nason, the scheduled renomination is the Town of Southern Shores representative to the Dare County Tourism Board effective January 2019. There's also the requirement, we offer them, furnish them with two additional candidates. We had no other council members, as far as I know, approached Sheila about this, and so I approached her, said I'd be one of the people they could put in the pot, and I think Jim Connors did the same thing. So, the three of us, the county can consider. Don't have any idea what the county will decide to do. I think, I think Chris is pretty happy on the tourism board, and they're pretty happy with him, but we can't, I can't speak for the, for the, for the board of commissioners. So, tonight I would like to have approval to nominate Mr. Nason as our primary representative for the, to the tourism, tourism board for 2019.
So, I'd like to make that motion to approve Mr. Nason as our appointee to the Tourism Planning Board.
Thank you, Jim. Do I have a second?
No second. I'd like to do it.
All right. A motion and a second. All in favor of reappointing Mr. Nason to the tourism board? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Mr. Mayor, y'all need to recall that Dare County makes us send two other names, so if you'd like to do the...
He did.
Does that include in the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, okay, all three, okay.
I just wanted to make sure that was in the motion.
I think I got it. No, you're good.
Jim and Chris.
Yes.
Yes. They didn't pick us last time, so.
You can feel free to take my place if you want.
I think, I think, I think, I think Chris is pretty safe. The next thing we have to consider, council, is a nomination for someone to serve on the Historic Landmarks Commission, and that's an application of tab four in your book, from Lorela Costa, to serve on the Historic Landmark Commission, the Town of Southern Shores. I need a motion to approve Lorela's application to serve on that, on the Historic Landmark Commission.
There's three in there, Tom.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry?
Can we just read them together?
Are we appointing three?
I don't see three. Oh, I see now. I apologize. I apologize. There actually are three.
What else?
You want to give us those?
Yes, sir. I thought, just to let you know...
All I saw was a blank page.
The members' applications that you have in your packets are three of the members from the Historic Landmark Commission. They were appointed December 2016, and when the commission was set up, they were set up where members have two-year terms and then other members have three-year terms. These are three of the members whose two-year terms have expired. They have indicated a willingness to serve another term if they, if you all wish to appoint, reappoint them. So, that's what this is. It's a reappointment of these three members. We do not, we, we've been advertising, as you know, we, we advertise for membership applications for boards. Every month in the newsletter, we don't have any other applications for Historic Landmark Commission at this time, so.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Wes. I appreciate that.
I amend your motion to include all three that they'd be reappointed on both of them.
Yeah, that's, I can do that.
And I'll second it.
I would, I would amend my motion to include all three of the candidates. I, I got to the second page which says blank, and I went blank. So, I might amend my motion to include all three of the candidates, so I can give their names. Richard Perkins, Lorela Costa, as I said earlier, Antonio Di Bernardo. So, do I have a second?
Yes, you do.
Thank you, Gary. Any further discussion, council? If not, I ask for a motion to approve the, I mean, I ask for a vote to approve the, the three candidates. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion is made and carried, Sheila unanimously. The final item to discuss on the, on the new business... I think the last item we have to discuss is the council meeting schedule for 2019, resolution 2018-1201. I would remind everyone that that council meeting schedule is exactly the same as our meeting schedule last year. We didn't change it from last year.
Actually, we took a budget work session off of last year. There was one more session in March.
I think you're right.
Last year.
There was.
Yep. And we did schedule in the second meeting for each month, but then we, somewhere in July, I guess we did away with them. And there is a, there's, be it resolved, any meeting may be canceled by the mayor for lack of agenda, that's, we have that covered in the rules, that, you know, if there's a vote of council is how you cancel a meeting, not independent of one person. And that's in our rules, so we don't need that in our council meeting schedule. So, I guess what I would propose is that we adopt this schedule. I would like to see us add those second meetings back each month and cancel them as needed if we don't have agenda items, and also add in March 19th at 9:00 a.m. as a budget work session, and that we have the budget complete at that time, or a proposed budget complete at that time. And last year, I remember, and each year, I remember, we keep delaying. We don't have numbers, we don't have numbers, but, you know, we know what we have this year, and we know what we had last year, the year before, and we can have a proposed budget and start working on it and moving forward. So, with those changes, I'd make a motion that we adopt it.
As is?
No.
No, he's making a bunch of...
Can you go over what your changes are then? Were you adding a second meeting for each month?
Add the second meeting back in each, it's, it's the Tuesday, the second Tuesday or the third Tuesday of each month at 9:00 a.m.
That's his proposal.
And then, March 19th would be a budget work session at 9:00 a.m. In addition to the April 23rd. And I have to pull out a calendar, but I can get all those back in if you want me to.
Maybe we should take those one at a time, Gary.
Well, it's, it's made a motion.
I'm saying, maybe we should, maybe he should modify his motion, or amend his motion to treat those one at a time.
Treat which ones?
You, you made a motion that had like three parts.
Yeah, I'm a little confused on exactly what the whole motion is. Our council meeting schedule, pretty much, I'm just asking that it be put together like the rules say it should be. In our rules, we have a second, a second Tuesday each month, and we have a third Tuesday, or morning meeting, which is a work session each month. And we had the February 26th planning session, we have the 23rd, and we would add the 19th of March back in, which would be a budget work session.
I'm comfortable with what was originally presented, but Gary's made a motion on the floor, so maybe we need to, maybe we need to make a vote on that.
I also ask that we take out, any meeting may be canceled by the mayor, meetings should be canceled by council.
That's why I said we should address these one at a time. I think you're trying to get too much in one, in one, in one motion here.
If I'm trying to make it go quick?
Yeah, let him, let him make the motion.
All right. All right. So, we have a motion on the floor, which you've all heard, I think twice now, I think I've even got it. Did I get a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion, council? If no further discussion, I'd call for them, I'd call for the vote. All in favor of Mr. McDonald's motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion is not carried.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as written, or the future schedule as written.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion, council?
I'd ask that you take out the part about you being able to cancel agenda items. I would like to keep that in there, because any council member has the, has the right to request an agenda item to be added to a meeting, to, and that would, there, to a scheduled meeting, and that would precipitate having the meeting. He's not trying to... Well, we have rules that are written. Well, that was written, that's written in the rules that I just read, that I just stated. Yes, it is. Not that the mayor has the right to cancel any meeting. No, but what is written in the rule is that when we have a scheduled meeting, any council member has, can request a, an agenda item. But when we have scheduled meetings, they can't just be canceled unless it's a consent of the full council.
Not the, it was never the full council.
Well, actually...
It was always the majority of the council, I believe.
Any two members can call for a special meeting.
Exactly right. Any two members.
Well...
We did that.
We did that in the November meeting, and you guys kind of just ignored us.
Yeah, you blew us off.
We were in this kind, and it's all, you know, you have, I made a motion, we have that November, and Fred seconded, that's two members asking for a meeting. And I understand what you're going to say, but I'm just saying, that was...
But let's hear Ben out. I'm curious to hear what he has to say.
That's different than what the rules are. The rules are talking about outside a meeting, and they spell out a particular procedure for two or less, the mayor or the mayor pro tem, or two people, and what you do is you carry a notice to the clerk, and there you go with it. But the, I don't see anywhere in the rules right now that precludes having, and even if the rule said you can't have the mayor cancel a meeting, by vote of the council, the schedule is going to have the exact same level of authority as the rules. Neither one of them override one, they're, they're both resolutions of the council, so the council could vote to change that. I think this, this is a common problem, that the reality is, what happens, and that hasn't happened with y'all lately, but I've had it happen with somebody else lately, where there was nothing to do for a meeting, half the board was going to be out of town, or not out of town, or somebody was going to be around, and, you know, ended up having to give legal advice that the only real way to cancel a meeting was to have another meeting to vote to cancel the meeting.
That's right.
And that's where the problem comes in. And I, the policy part about whether or not you want it or not, that's certainly up to you. I don't think there's anything that precludes you from having the mayor have the ability to cancel a meeting if there aren't agenda items. I think Mr. Connors is correct, but other people can add agenda items, depending on the timing, I guess, somebody could play games with that, and the mayor could cancel your meeting without you getting your agenda items on there, but as far as being able to do it, I think it's possible to do it, and I think I've seen situations where it's useful to have some sort of, some sort of mechanism. Unfortunately, the mechanism can't be, all five of us got on an email and said it's okay, because once three of you get on an email and say it's okay, you just had another meeting, but you didn't have notice, and you don't have minutes, and you just violated the law. So, the only way to do it, if you don't have something like this, is to actually have a meeting. Now, what you do see is there are plenty of boards, plenty of town councils, county commissions, boards of adjustment, that just say, eh, we don't have anything, we're not having a meeting, and they just don't have a meeting. And to some degree, that works, because nobody shows up, they don't have a quorum, because everybody thinks that's something that they could do. But if one day, somebody said, well, we're not having a meeting, and three people showed up, you got a meeting.
I understand.
And, and so I, I think that it's a common problem that, I guess, boards who aren't trusting, trusting of one another necessarily, may not want to have happen, but otherwise, it's something that, it is a useful mechanism that I think other boards...
Without this clause, what, what would the rules say that has to be done if a meeting needs to cancel?
I don't think there's anything in the rules, so I think you have to back out to, it's a, it's a council meeting, there's a scheduled council.
You have to counsel essentially the, the month before, have a special meeting to cancel the meeting.
Special meeting, emergency meeting, or cancel it the month before. Or, everybody have a gentleman's agreement that we just ain't showing up?
That's crazy.
So, as we all know, it's not been an issue in the past. Why change it now?
What's not been an issue with that?
We've not had an issue in canceling meetings, and why are we changing the rules as we go?
I'm not sure we're changing the rules as we go, but maybe we are.
I think we are changing the rules, but I think Ben elucidated as to why, in a common sense manner, why...
It's not been an issue. Our council's met every time.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, but...
The Town of Southern Shores has canceled meetings for lack of agenda items before. Maybe not since present members have been on council, but it has happened in the past in our town.
You know what? This is kind of silly to argue about.
It sure is.
Gary's got a point. Maybe the middle ground is, I would be willing to amend my motion to remove this new clause, keep the meeting and its meeting schedule exactly as it was, very similar to last year, and let's just move on.
What, what, what clause is it?
It's the clause at the bottom, I believe, and I could find that.
Page one of two.
Page one of two. It's, it's the one, Gary's right, we haven't had a problem so far. You know, if we should have a problem in the future, how about we all agree to change it? Is that fair?
So, strike that, any meeting may be canceled by the mayor for lack of agenda items?
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
And let's just move on. The poor audience has to hear all this stuff.
So, all in favor?
Can we add our second budget meeting back in?
Chris said...
I think budget's probably the most...
Where do you want to add it, Gary?
Wait a minute, wait, 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 wait. Let me ask, let me ask our, our person who's responsible for that, his comments on that, Peter.
Well, you, if you have a budget meeting in March, you'll get proposed, our numbers, which are proposed expenses, just like you, we told you last year, and we gave the council, what you will not get are the distributed revenues from the county. So, you're not going to get an accurate budget that early. That's the problem with March 19th.
So, if we have them, but we could have the meeting, but if we get it, we're not really getting the information.
You're not going to get, you would have already gotten, you would have already gotten the information from us in the form of expenses anyway, just like you did last year.
Is there a chance we might get it by then?
I doubt it. It's never, not, in my tenure here, we've never gotten it that early.
Yeah, but that's not necessarily the point. The point is, we need to have these discussions early on, so if we do want to make, come up with new approaches, new plans, we can do it. If we're all crammed in at that last meeting, it doesn't give us any time for discussion. And I understand what Peter's saying, but he can also give projected revenues, and then at the next meeting, give the actual revenues, and we can go there, but we've started the process early rather than waiting until the last...
Well, I won't be giving any projected revenues on distributed revenues. I can tell you that. We won't go that far, step out that far. You'll get exactly what you got last year that early, and that's why you canceled that meeting. You can, you can certainly have two meetings in April, and you would have projected numbers by that time from the county. But at March 19th, you're going to get exactly what you got, and we can have that at a regular meet, that discussion at a regular meeting.
Well, and, and maybe the, the solution is, we could put a meeting on the calendar, whether it be April, to an extra meeting in there to cover reviewing the budget. If the numbers aren't there, guess what? Let's cancel it. Or if we feel it's not productive, we can do that, but at least it's on the agenda. Let's just move past this.
So, you got an April explanatory meeting that is already scheduled?
Okay.
Budget workshop, work, work session.
So, Gary, what would you propose to add one if you had your choice?
I would tell you to maybe like May the 14th or 20th.
Okay, that's going to get into the notice time for the budget. I, we, April 30th would be one option. I'm just throwing that out there as a suggestion.
Will you have the numbers in last year? We didn't have them till May.
No, you had, you had them in at the, at the April meeting last year. You had numbers in at the April meeting, if you do it... You had numbers in at the April meeting, uh, if you do it April thirtieth, the next week, that'll give you two meetings to talk about anything you wanna talk about. And then you have the actual, uh, present, file budget in May.
So I'd like to amend my motion to add a, a budget meeting for April thirtieth, to approve the schedule as it is with that one change, to pull out the, the clause about having the mayor...
The mayor has no, no more authority.
The mayor does not have the authority on his own to cancel a meeting, but if there's nothing on there, let's all agree just to cancel the meeting and not waste people's time. And that's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion, council? All in favor of, uh, Mr. Mr. Nason's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. So we, now we changed, we've had one, one additional meeting, and we've taken my authority out to, uh, cancel a meeting for lack of agenda items. That's good, let's go to the next item of business. Got it, I know that, Gary. Any additional, but, do you have a public comment tonight? Ann Scherzma? Welcome back, Ann.
Ann Scherzma, sixty-nine Hickory Trail. Hello again. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Nason, very much, for offering to recuse yourself as you did. I think that was, um, appropriate and quite honorable on your part, and I appreciate it a lot. My point in writing about, um, your interests in some of these properties on the ocean front is simply to encourage full disclosure. I am not suggesting that you're doing anything nefarious or illegal. And my concern also was not your relationship with Saga, but rather the interest that you have in sixty-four Ocean Boulevard, which is an oceanfront lot that has yet to be developed. Your pre-existing relationship with Saga was not my concern. So I thank you very much, and I also thank you for shepherding through this last discussion on the meeting schedule. I would like to apologize to Ms. Sherlock, and I guess to you too, because I was the one that suggested there were ten bedrooms in the house at sixty-four Ocean Boulevard, sixty-four A. I would swear, I saw that in your building plans, in your site plans, that there were in fact ten bedrooms, and I think I counted them, but if there are in fact just seven, I apologize, it was my error. And I did not mean to en- encourage any, um, vitriol is the word that somebody used. I also would say, I am unaware of anything that has been done to your family, your wife, your children. I know of no one who's done anything threatening, and I certainly do not approve of that nor, and, and encourage it. The graffiti on, uh, sixty-two Ocean Boulevard, I believe, was coincidental. I think it had nothing to do with what is going on in this town. I hope so, for, 'cause God forbid it was pornographic, and I think you have to kind of know a little bit about pornography to, um, to write what the people wrote on the house. I don't think it reflects this community, these people, um, and our spirit of communication. So, I, I am a part of that social media that Mr. Connors likes to malign. Uh, I believe I have a voice in the community, and it's an important one, and, um, all media do everywhere in this world. And I have freedom of speech, clearly. Sometimes I make mistakes, sometimes I voice opinions that people don't agree with, but by and large, I try to report facts. If I am not reporting facts, like the ten-bedroom, um, mistake, I am the first to admit that I am wrong, and I will print a retraction. So, um, I thank you, I think it was a very productive meeting.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Ann. Jerry Sullivan? Thank you, Jerry. Debbie Newberry? Debbie's not gonna pass. Good evening, Debbie.
I would talk, yes. I just wanted to say a few things. I actually wasn't planning to talk tonight, but there was a few things that I heard that I, I just wanted to make sure that I, I provided a few words for them. As for the meetings and getting rid of the second meeting each month, I understand that, and we do cancel most of them, which is great, because why waste the time if we don't need to? But I, I, I hope that you do, in the future, reconsider this again, 'cause I think it's a great opportunity. When we have different items that may need to be discussed, it's already on the schedule, we can get in there, you can discuss them without having to call a special meeting. And, but just cancel most of the time, 'cause most of the time, they're really not needed. Um, and as with social media, this was something that, that really bothered me, uh, some of the talking here, that this is kind of evil, and not presenting facts, and those types of things. And I, I think social media is pretty important in our community and in our world at this point in time. And I have to say that, Ann, your, some of your blogs, not that I've seen many of them, but the ones that I've seen have been very good, and they're very, you know, they're facts. There are, you know, really not a lot of, of pushy opinions in them, it's, it's stating some, some things, some potential, uh, um, perspectives that people may have. And if it is causing a problem anywhere, then we need to direct that at the people that are causing the problems, and not at the social media. That's not the issue. The whole issue with social media is to get more people involved in our community, and I think it has helped. We, we have a more diverse group coming to these meetings, so I really feel that that is important. And anything that, uh, anybody that does a personal attack on somebody, I don't think's acceptable. And we need to stop that, and I am hopeful that the police can find out, uh, if this is happening, if anything really has happened with you, Chris. I hope the police find out who's doing it, and they stop it, 'cause that's not acceptable. And when it comes to the defacing of the property, honestly, I saw what was done there, and that really seemed more like kids to me. I, I would hate to think that any adult was doing anything like that. It, it's, and, but I think the kids need to pay. And so I'm hoping we catch who did it, and, and they have to, um, fix it, or pay for it, or do community service, and hopefully it just was children, but, uh, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Debbie. This time I'll close public comment. I'll take a few minutes of your time, and, um, just tell you a few things you should know about the state of your town as the new year approaches. We continue to be debt-free. We continue to have the lowest tax rate of any of the towns here in, on Dare, in Dare County. We, we continue to maintain a healthy unassigned fund balance, a strong reserve. We continue to provide more services to our residents than any of our sister towns. We continue to see new homes being built, and new families moving wel- being welcomed into our community at a good rate, an excellent rate, I think. We continue to be fortunate to have a capable, courteous, and professional town staff to handle the day-to-day operations of our town. We continue to have conscientious, caring people serving on our planning board and other committees. We need to move forward with a strong capital improvement program, as evidenced by our new walking path on East Dogwood Trail, and our continued bulkheadin', bulkhead and street rebuilds. We continue to look to our future with a ratification of the new ten-year contract with our volunteer fire department, and a, and a moving forward with the construction of a new fire station, a state-of-the-art fire station, starting in January twenty nineteen. Finally, I wanna, I wanna issue a sincere thank you, or make a sincere thank you to the people who give their time and energy and support to things like the Outer Banks Food Pantry, the Outer Banks Food for Thought, the Outer Banks Relief Foundation, Duck United Messes Church Caring Hands, and others in our community who reached out so generously to our neighbors in Swansboro early this year. I'd like to wish each of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you. Mr. Nason?
I don't have much to say, other than, um, to second what you said in the moment of silence, which is that Glenn's passing is a significant loss to the community. He had the ability to thoughtfully bridge divides, um, ideological divides, and, and get us all to work together. And so, um, you know, let's, I guess, let's continue in the new year to try to do that better, um, with Glenn in mind.
Thank you. Fred?
Okay. Yeah, I got a couple of things. One, I wanna say, Chris, I think it was, uh, good that you came forward with, uh, your proposal for recusal, but I must admit, Ben convinced me of the law, so that's why I voted that way. But I think it's good that you did come forward. Second, um, and this is kinda to support, uh, what my wife said. I think social media is a good way of communicating with the community, as long as it's done in a, uh, very positive manner. And, and I do agree, I think Ann has made a, an excellent attempt to do that. I wish other people would, would blog and get information out there, and get discussions going, because if we don't have that kind of communications, people are going to assume that everything's moving along great, and maybe they don't understand the issues. And social media has a way of spreading the word quickly, like I said, as long as it's done in a positive manner. And so far, I've seen positive things coming about. And if there's a mistake, I've seen corrections, and I think that's good. Going one step further, I think our newsletter could be a better means of communicating information to people in the town, but not only them, but the ones that, uh, don't reside here, but do have interest in property in Southern Shores. It used to be a time that our newsletter had news in it, and hate to say it, I don't see much news anymore. I see mostly meeting notices and advertisements for SPCA, for all the neat dogs that are, cats that are available over there, but I think we need to put more emphasis on, uh, putting information out. I think we can do a better job at that. I'm not trying to put an extra burden on the staff, but if there can be more staff input, uh, as far as what's going on in the town, even if it's not exactly the best news that we wanna portray, we need to tell it like it is, so people know. And, um, I've attempted to write a couple of articles in the newsletter, and I, I don't think it's a bad idea if other council, uh, members, uh, would do the same, and, and give their views, uh, you know? Rest of us may not agree with you, but at least it gets information out there, and it gets people thinking about what's going on in the, in the town. So I believe that's all I, I have. Peter, again, extend condolences for the loss of your mother. I know that's been tough to, for you. And hope everyone has a nice holiday season and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Jerry? Thank you. Jim?
Um, I'd like to express condolences officially to Mr. Rasko also. I counted about twenty people from Southern Shores there, there may have been more, and I think that speaks very highly for you, because I'm gonna venture, I'm gonna stick my neck out and say I doubt that anybody that was there from the beaches knew your mom. But anyway, um, I would also like to say that I agree with Ms. Newberry and Fred when they say that social media can be a very good way of disseminating, um, news, information, et cetera. But in my opinion, I'm gonna be an outlier here, in my opinion, the social media we're dealing with right now is just very similar to what was going on on Fairway Drive a few years ago. There are allegations and insinuations being made, not only against Chris, but I've picked them up against me also, which, fine, I don't, I don't give a flying flip. But there's also, there's a lot of inaccurate information out there, and the problem with that is, is that the public who are reading these social media blogs, and Facebook posts, and whatever else, they get the wrong impression. And it's gotten to the point where some, Mr. Nason was being, it, it was, people thought that he should be thrown in jail. Now, how ludicrous is that? We just heard from the attorney that there was no conflict of interest, but yet people are out there believing a, a clear conflict of interest, and saying he ought to be thrown in jail, and shouldn't, should, that he should be embarrassed to show his face in this town. That kind of stuff is way over the top. It's uncalled for, and it's just plain old mean spirit. And when Mr. Nason talked about his family feeling threatened, I've been down that road before, too. I was actually challenged to a gunfight in this town years ago, over one of these political issues that now, years later, nobody even remembers. I mean, the social media, it can be a tremendous force of good, but it can also be an extremely damaging thing. Now, is that graffiti on that house directly related to that? I don't know. But the coincidence, is it a coincidence? It's an awfully strong coincidence, but sometimes, to me, if it talks like a duck, quacks like a duck, and flies like a duck, then it's a duck, and I don't need a police investigation to tell me that it's a duck. There's, there's a lot of stuff on the social media that is just way over the top. Nobody is asking your opinion from the audience there.
Hey, yeah, that's, that's okay, we're good. Anything else?
No, I think I've said enough.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn, Tom.
I'll second that.
Motion to adjourn, council, all in favor? Aye, thank you.